Jeanne Los, my left, is the editor of the Ford Park Review. She's worked as a reporter for the Oak Park based Wednesday Journal family of newspapers for four years. She is executive director of Kids News Journalism Camp. Previously, she was a reporter and night editor for the Lafayette Journal and Courier in Lafayette, Indiana. Jeanne Los. John Lee is the president of Neighbors of Maywood Community Organizations. An ordained minister, Mr. Lee founded the community in Maywood, a church without walls, in response to the needs he observes in the village that has been his home for more than five years. Since its founding, Lee's organization has attracted hundreds of missionaries to Maywood, maybe the Valley, to help on a variety of social service projects such as cleaning up the parks and serving meals to those in need. John Lee. Jim Goldberg, to my right, is a retired high school teacher and longtime community activist. She's been politically active at the grassroots level since the seventies, most notably as part of the fight for the equal rights amendment to the U.S. Constitution. She received her master's degree in urban studies from Northeastern Illinois University and her bachelor's degree from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. Currently, she's active in several organizations including Sarah's End, the Oak Park based domestic violence agency, the League of Women Voters, and the Illinois Retired Teacher Federation. Jim Goldberg. And finally, Erica Sanchez is a graduate student at Northwestern University School of Communication. She received her undergraduate degree from Elmhurst College after a 12-year career in the financial industry working for companies such as JP Morgan Chase and Capital One formerly HSBC. She transitioned to county government. Presently, she's an executive assistant in the office of the Cook County reporter deeds. Mrs. Sanchez, a proud resident of Maywood, is a former chairwoman of Adelante, the Latino networking group of JP Morgan Chase, and an active volunteer in her community. She's married to Antonio Sanchez, Erica Sanchez.
Pat Quinn, we gotta go through me to get to Pat Quinn. And I just need, I'll be honest with everybody down here, love or hate me, I'm running for governor. I did everything I had to do to get on the ballot. Pat Quinn objected to my petitions 31 times. We overcame all those objections, and now he refuses to give me a debate. I need the community to step up for me and secure me a debate with Pat Quinn. Everybody knows that Pat Quinn has had failed policies one after another since he's been in leadership. And the thing about this time for change in Illinois, I have a solution to the 2020 plan for the state of Illinois, which represents a perfect vision. I'm a resident of Proviso. I've been looking out here for some years in Hillside. I raised $50 million of cease fire when I was working for cease fire, and we hired over 300 ex-officers. And I know people statewide. I'll be at Decatur tomorrow. The African-American church, over 15 churches in Decatur, Peoria, Illinois, and Springfield will be celebrating T.O. Hartman as the first African-American governor along with a female renegade African-American young lady running for governor for the first time in U.S. history. Roland Burns ran for governor as African-American male, but this is the first ticket. And I just want to say this, it's not just because I'm African-American, it's because I'm qualified, okay? Take a look at my website, I need your support. If you know anybody that knows Pat Quinn, tell them he needs to give me a debate. The people of Illinois deserve a debate. I stopped by his house last week, they showed on Channel 9 he was not at home. I stopped by his office, you can't get into his office. We need to have a debate. That's the democratic process, okay? So I want to thank you all for listening. Punch number 11 on March 3rd or March 18th. I'm as real as they come. I'll be a champion for all the people. And I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak. T.O. Hartman, go.
Good afternoon. I would be remiss if I didn't also thank Michael Romaine and also the Village Press and all of you who are here for this opportunity. I am Ike Carruthers, many of you know me. I am the former ordman of the 29th Ward, having served in that position for 11 years, also as a Democratic committee man. I'm running for this office because I like to provide the same type of leadership I provided for the 29th Ward. The 29th Ward was a ward that was recognized for great successes in terms of economic development, in terms of job development, in terms of moving forward, in terms of beautification. We took the 29th Ward to another level. I'd like to provide that same type of opportunity for this district. I think the, if you look at this district and you look at who lives in the 29th Ward in the west side of Chicago, it's not much different who live in the Proviso area. Also, Oak Park is a big part of it as well. When you look at Proviso and you look at the west side of Chicago, great west side of Chicago, we're literally just cousins. I would like to provide the same type of leadership to move this district forward. I'm the only candidate who understands what it's like to be an elected official because I'm the only one that has. I'm the only candidate who's actually brought something back to the community himself. I brought it. I pushed the buttons, I'm the one that made the votes. I understand legislation because I crafted legislation. I understand budget because I ran a $54 million budget when I was deputy commissioner in Streets and Sands for the city of Chicago. I had 580 ploees. So I understand management, I understand the fiscal responsibilities of an elected official, particularly running with a budget of $3.2 billion for the county, but also realizing that in Chicago, the budget was $6 billion. So I understand about how to manage that. So I'm asking for your support on March 18th. I'm really interested and can't wait to hear the questions because I know that I am equipped to move the first district forward. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Blake Cersey. And let me start by telling you about me. I was born and raised in the Austin neighborhood to a single-parent mom. My mother struggled to raise me and my brother. She raised us alone. She's a member of the Chicago Teachers Union. She's a clerk at a Chicago public school. I always say despite that, though, despite our struggles, I was rich growing up as a kid. Certainly not with money, because we didn't have a lot of that, but because of the values that she instilled in me. It was those values led me to go to Fenwick for high school, Princeton for college, and University of Chicago for law school. Now I'm an attorney at General Block. It's those same values that have led me to run for Cook County Commissioner. What have I done in the community? I served on the board of several nonprofits, including Bethel Mall, Christ and King Jesuit High School, and Amoja Student Development Corporation that served the greater west side of Chicago. In 2012, Governor Pat Quinn appointed me to the Illinois Medical District Commission. The commission is charged with managing and developing the largest urban medical district in the country. I'm proud of the work that me and my fellow commissioners have done to create jobs and to help the medical district be a place where people want to come to receive medical services. What do I want to do as Cook County Commissioner? There are three things we focused on in this race. The first, reduce the population of Cook County Jail. Let me tell you why that's important to me. I can tell you what schools I went to and what job I have, but at the end of the day, when I drive home at night to Austin, I'm a 6'2", 230-pound, young, dark-skinned black man. That's all law enforcement sees, that's all prosecutors see. I want to help young black men like myself get jobs and stay out of Cook County Jail. We do that, we'll lower the population, and we'll improve our local economy. I also want to help people continue to get increased access to health care through the Affordable Care Act. And thirdly, I want to use land banking as a tool to revitalize our communities. Now, look, I can talk until I'm blue in the face about policy, and you're here to talk about policy here today, but what matters most in this race is having a commissioner who is ethical and who you can trust. And that's why we were fortunate to achieve the endorsement of Cook County Board President Tony Preckwinkle. We're going to be a commissioner you can count on. We're ready to move Cook County forward. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brenda Smith, and I am currently the only female right now on this ballot. I'm a little bit nervous, so just work with me. This is my first candidate's form. And I would just like to thank Brandon and Michael Romaine for inviting me. However, I'm running for this position because I feel that I would be the best candidate. I'm already there, working every day with Cook County Commissioner Earl and Collins on the day-to-day operation. I will work for you to ensure that you get excellent service, not just service, but excellent service. I would ensure that I will provide the service that you can be proud of across this district. I want to build the bridges with non-for-profits, community organizations, with the city as well as with the county districts, the suburban areas. I'm asking you on today if you would look to seek 101 on March 18th. Vote for Brenda Smith, and I will make you proud of me. Thank you.
Let me first of all thank God for the opportunity to be here today. I'm still here. Let me thank the Village Free Press, Michael, and all of you for coming up with this idea. This is an important forum. Let me also thank each and every one of you who's here. Let me thank Mayor Edwina Perkins and her absence, and all of the elected officials. Let me also thank my fellow opponents for being here today. I'm Richard Boykin, unbought, unbossed, and unafraid. You say that again, unbought, unbossed, and unafraid. I grew up in Inglewood, in a single-parent home. My father raised four of us. Faith and hard work. Faith and hard work led me to graduate from Chicago Vocational High School. Wasn't supposed to go to college, but we went to college at Central State University in Ohio. Went there on a football scholarship. Became an academic All-American, this kid from Inglewood. Came back here and taught in the public schools four years. Then I went back to Ohio, went to the University of Dayton School of Law. It was at Dayton where my faith was challenged. My first year of law school, my most difficult academic year of my entire life. First year, first semester, all of the black students in the school, the school is 90% white, but all of the black students were either on academic probation or failed out. I was fortunate enough to be on academic probation, hanging on by a thread. How many of you all know some challenges? I was hanging on by a thread. Well, my faith taught me to turn to God. I turned to God and I said, "God, if you will see me through this, help me to graduate. I will serve you." Somebody said earlier that they're the only one who actually brought millions of dollars back. I'm glad to put my record up against anybody's. We brought billions of dollars back to the 7th congressional district while I was there. I'm Richard Boykin, unbought, unbossed, and unafraid.
Paul Lawless, I want to thank Michael and the Village Press and the moderators and all of you for being out here tonight, because this is what it's about. It's about you being here to hear what we have to say. Postcards, telephone calls, television commercials, isn't the way you should elect your elected official. I believe that the only vote and the only endorsement that counts is yours. A lot of people this week have been talking about their endorsements, and I've got to the point to say, be proud of your endorsement, but it's not endorsement that's going to win this election. But also at the same time, when I think about all the things that we've gone through this week, I think about when I was living in Houston, Texas, and my mom came ill. They called me and told me I needed to come back home. I came back home and I helped my mom do her business. At the same time, when I came back from college, I got involved in the community. Now, I started with nonprofit organizations, and we tried to keep St. Anne open out on the west side of Chicago. Then I got fortunate enough to get hooked up with who I thought was the greatest politician in Illinois, Harold Washington. He was my mentor. He taught me that public service is about the public, not self-interest and not self-serving. And I am proud to say that I have been an advocate for public service. Now, I'm not afraid to say that when you do get endorsements or whatever, you should be proud of them. Don't run away from them, because at the end of the day, they're your endorsements, and you will have to be accountable for them. Now, I'll tell you right now, I'm the only candidate that only has people endorsement. I don't have any politician, and I don't have their money. I don't want their money. And if they were to give it to me, I wouldn't take it based on who that politician was. Let me say this, you have to be true to yourself. Anyone that will close 50 schools in Chicago in only the minority community is not a friend of mine, nor is he a friend of yours. And I'm here to tell you, King Ron and Jason Irving, I'm not going to win this election. You, the people, are going to win this election. This is your election. Send them a message loud and clear. And one last thing, if you got the city right, he wouldn't have to worry about the county. We'll take care of the county, he needs to take care of the city. We lost 500 people last year because of murder, and so on and so forth. So my point is this, I am a clear choice. I'm an independent choice. If you want someone that, as Richard said, unbought, unbought, I'm your man.
All of the Cook County Commissioners have to work directly with the president, who is also up for reelection, Tony Preckwinkle. She has taken on a very unusual job, or she's asked the board to give her a very unusual job, that normally belongs either to the sheriff of Cook County, which is Thomas Darke, or the chief judge, Timothy Evans. And it has to do with overcrowding at the jail. Now, everybody knows that there's a good percentage of people at the jail that are there awaiting trial for nonviolent offenses. And the question is, why don't these people get to go home on some kind of electronic monitoring? I'm showing my wrist, but it's really on the leg. Electronic monitoring is supposed to be a decision made by the sheriff or the chief judge, and since neither one is doing it, she said, "Give that job to me." Now, of course, it's a very, very real job, and it has a lot of risks, because that one person that you sent home on electronic monitoring that commits a crime, it comes bad on the person who sent them. So my question to all of you is this, what do you think of her proposal? It's nothing if not unusual, but what, as commissioner, would you vote for such a proposal? Would you give it to her, or would you not?
First, the first problem with Cook County Jail, the first thing we have to do to deal with the overcrowding in Cook County Jail is to quit putting so many folks in Cook County Jail. That's the first thing we need to do. If we eliminate putting so many folk in the jail, we won't have the overcrowding problem. I do agree with President Preckwinkle, who also said that Cook County Jail is the intersection between poverty and racism. That's what she said. The other problem is, another one of your candidates said earlier, is the overcharging by the state's attorney's office. Cook County needs to be fixed. What she's really demonstrating is the problem we have within Cook County government. We have a sheriff, because of politics, refuses to let people out on electronic monitoring. That's the reason why he won't do it. He already has the authority right now to do it, and he won't do it because he's afraid he lets one person out, and they go afoul, and that's going to hurt him politically. So he won't do it. So we have a sheriff that's already needs to be corrected. So I agree with her, we certainly need to let more folk out, but we also need to not put as many folk in Cook County Jail. We also need alternative to incarceration. I'm a second chance candidate, I know what that's all about. We need to have alternatives to incarceration, and that's the truth. We put too many people in. We need to have programs linked with community groups. We need to have a training program for young people rather than locking everybody up, and folks can't make bond. Do you realize that average person that's locked up, when they come up, their case is normally dismissed for these nonviolent offenses? Those are nonviolent offenses. Their case is dismissed, and they sit there for months and months and sometimes years, can't make the bond. So something's wrong with that system, it certainly needs to be corrected, and I look forward to being on the board that helps her correct that problem.
Question is, yes, as Cook County Commissioner, I will support giving our board's president the ability to determine who should be sent out on supervised release. It costs about $143 a day to hold somebody in Cook County Jail. It costs about $30 a day to let them out on ankle release. Not only is it wrong to hold people there, because let me tell you this, if I send you to Cook County Jail on a low-level offense, you get caught with three, four, or five grams of marijuana on you, and you can't afford to make your bond payment, and you stay at Cook County Jail for six to nine months, you're going to come out a criminal. We put you in there, a person, oftentimes a young person, much like myself, who made a mistake, but we hold you there and turn you into the type of person who our society continually incarcerates. Yes, I do support giving President Preckwinkle that authority, and I applaud her ability and her reason, her rationality, and wanting to take on that responsibility. The main issue is, to put it plain, no one wants to be responsible for someone who's been released who does something wrong. I think being a Cook County Board member, taking that vote to grant her that authority, and working with President Preckwinkle will allow that responsibility to be spread amongst all of us. It just makes sense. It makes sense for the people, but it also makes good sense for taxpayers like you and I.
I think I support the president. She's currently suggesting an initiative to clear up the backlog for people who have been there for years, waiting on cases. She wants to hire a judge to help clear up that backlog, and that's what we need to do. I also feel that moving cases through the system quicker, also supporting a mental health service, and offering alternatives to incarceration. I also believe that we should increase collaborations between more organizations already serving mental health challenges, courts and county jails. Also, collaborations on grants between non-for-profits and courts. We do need to, we're currently working on Commissioner Collins, a program, legislation that would help to reduce mental illness. And we want to identify that early on in the schools, because we know that our kids act out sometime in school. We need to put organizations, police departments, and also DCSF, social service agencies, where we can have people to help us out with identifying what are some of the issues that our kids are facing in the schools. Thank you.
The answer is no. I will not give the president the authority to do that, and the reason why is because the sheriffs, that's the authority within the sheriff, within his charge. He's an elected official, he's not an appointed official, and you have to have special skills and that sort of thing in order to make these determinations. Furthermore, the entities that will make those determinations are Anita Alvarez, the state's attorney, Sheriff Tom Darke, and the chief judge, Tim Evans. Those are the three individuals who need to come together to make those determinations on which nonviolent offenders actually need to be let out on what we call electronic monitoring. Now, let me say, if we want to deal with the issue of overcrowding at the jail, what we can do, I toured the jail twice with Sheriff Tom Darke, whose support I'm pleased to have. Now, fully one-third of the nearly 10,000 people at Cook County Jail shouldn't be there because they're severely mentally ill. Now, the greatness of a nation is judged by how well we treat our senior citizens, how well we treat our children, and how well we treat those who are sick and struggling among us. If we send them to Cook County Jail for their mental health treatment, that's the wrong thing to do. We can do better as a county, and we must do better as a county. And so I'm in favor of making sure that that third who are there who shouldn't be there, we actually get them into a setting where they can get the treatment that they deserve. We ought to do that in the county, and we ought to look at other alternative sentences and alternative forms of sentencing as well. I think we overcharge, I agree with that. I think that certain people are treated certain ways depending on what they look like. I mean, if you went to Cook County Jail, you'd think that the county is just all black. I mean, it's 90-plus percent young African-American males at Cook County Jail. It's the wrong thing to do.
And Mr. Lawless.
Now, I just want to add to that percentage, of that 90%, 60% of those inmates are from Chicago. You would think that Chicago is the only place that's having crime, and this is a big county. So at the end of the day, we need to address that too. And I think that the police departments who are arresting these individuals have to be a little more accountable. As one of the candidates said, we need to look at what these people are going to jail for. Someone with a small amount of marijuana, he might have been sitting in his car, police pulled him over, he see a blunt, now he's in jail. Now he's got to go to jail, he got to get bond out, and maybe lose a job and all that other stuff, just because that officer wants to make his life a living hell, so to speak. Or let's take that person who was drinking and driving. Unfortunately, we don't want drunk drivers on the road, but I don't think you got to put them away. You give them a ticket, and you put them, and you make sure that they come to court. If they don't come to court, then they have other consequences. In terms of the president wanting to have this authority, it's a temporary solution. And the reason it's temporary is because we have a sheriff who's not doing his job. Now, if I wasn't doing my job as commissioner, I would like to think you would fire me. And if you don't, then Abraham Lincoln once said, "You deserve the government that you get." If he's not doing the job he's supposed to do, and the reason he's not is because he's interested in his own political agenda, so he's going to let individuals sit in jail because he wants his own personal agenda to not be affected by maybe what one of them may or may not do. The overcrowding of the jail is a very serious issue. It's a cost factor here, folks. This is all about money. It's not about whether or not they want to help these individuals or not, it's all about money. And at the end of the day, as one of the candidates said, it costs $143 a day. But at the end of the day, I will say this, I will say this, that I would have to consider all of what she's asking to determine whether or not it's a good decision to let her have that authority.
...jobs in Cook County. How can Cook County and the board assist the fiscally distressed municipalities such as Maywood in the area of job development?
You know, as a county commissioner, we don't create jobs because we don't have jobs to create, but what we can do is use what's already available to us, community black grants, Section 3, which is a federal program. Under those programs, anytime a community or organization receives any of that money, they have to provide training and job training and whatever assistance to help those individuals. The money is to try to bring those individuals up, as you just referred. And if you are using the money in the right way, then this should not be an issue. What I find to be a big problem is that a lot of this money is being abused. We know it's being abused, we don't want to talk about it, but it is being abused. We're not, there's no accountability, there's no audit, it's just going out the door, and there's no results. Now, as the next commissioner, other than the one that's current, I'm going to be active. I'm going to know what's going on. I want to be engaged, I want to be responsive, I want to know why we don't have the opportunities that are available to us. Like I said, Section 3 is a program that's already in place. Why reinvent the wheel? That is in place. We got community black grants, Section 3, we can work with the municipalities, we can work with the nonprofits to ensure that they are giving those, they are creating jobs with those federal funds. So at the end of the day, I can't create a job, but jobs that are available, I can go and see why they're not being created under those grants and those programs.
Commissioner, I'll put a laser-like focus on the Proviso area, especially this community we call Maywood. The reality of it is, is we got to make sure that we have safe streets, we got to make sure that in order for businesses to come in, the streets got to be safe. Too many of our children are dying, and we got to make sure that we have generations coming up that can support us once we get older and that sort of thing. But the reality of it is, is we also have to make our county competitive. Too many jobs are going to DuPage, too many jobs are going to Lake County, because we're not competitive. We're not competitive on taxes, we're not competitive on sales tax, we're not competitive in other ways. And we got to use, like Ron said, every ounce of economic incentive available to us to attract businesses, but first we must make sure that our streets are safe. The other thing that we must do is we must make sure that we leverage, and I will, my relationships with the folks in Washington, both Democrats and Republicans, and bring back what we call job training grants, because I do believe that businesses will come, and when they come, we got to have a workforce that's ready to go to work. The other thing that we'll do, and I'm pleased to have stood with Congressman Danny Davis and passed the Second Chance Act, we got to make sure that folks who have records have an opportunity at a second chance. That bill is helping impact communities all throughout the country. I'm proud of the work that I did. I'm proud of the work that I did on that with Congressman Danny Davis. No others will say, "Well, you can't take credit for that." But let me tell you, if it didn't get done, you'd say we should have gotten it done, and we didn't get it done. So, we'll take credit for it, the successes as well as things that we didn't do. But I'm proud of that work. We got to put an extra focus on those individuals and make sure that we do more sealing of records and that sort of thing.
I fear annual, not only to, as an incentive, to create opportunities. We have to let the people know what the opportunities are. I would invite businesses out. I would give training. I would promote more training for women in the labor field. And also, I would offer more tax incentives for businesses to hire people. In creating economic and development, we will make jobs. We will create jobs. So, that's what I would do to bring jobs in. And we're doing it now. Thank you.
There are three topics that I want to talk about to talk to you all about what I would do to create jobs, specifically for Maywood. The first thing, the Cook County Land Bank. I've talked about the land bank a lot on this campaign and how I think it could be used as a tool to help redevelop our communities, to take distressed properties and put them back to use. One thing that we spoke about is ensuring that people in our communities are the ones who are hired to build and reconstruct these properties. I think all too often, whether it be in Maywood or in Austin where I live, you see people working on a project, and you're wondering, "Boy, that could have been a job that went to my cousin, my neighbor, my nephew." You go up to them and you ask them where you're from, and they're not even from Cook County. So, using the land bank as a tool to redevelop our communities, but ensuring that while we do that, we hire people from our communities to work on these properties. The second thing, on Illinois Medical District Commission, I'm proud of what we did. We signed and drafted an intergovernmental agreement between us, the Cook County Health and Hospital System, and the Cook County Board of Commissioners. What this agreement does is, it allows us to approve processes and buildings faster in the medical district. If we can approve agreements and developments faster, that means that people build faster. What does that mean? That means there are more jobs available. But we have to make sure that people in our communities know about these jobs. I was at an event with a supporter who's a restaurateur just the other day, and he was talking to me, and he said, "You know what? I got jobs. People just don't know about them." I looked at him, he almost broke my neck the way I snapped my head to him. "You have jobs? As Commissioner?" I'll go to those people who are supporting me and say, "Hey, guess what? Come out to Maywood to have your job fair. Don't have it downtown. Our people might not know if it's downtown." We'll work with local organizations and churches to be sure that people know about the jobs that already exist.
The issue of jobs is a very important issue, and I certainly understand it because we bought millions of dollars to 29th Ward to create economic development and jobs. What I understand about it is this. You have to be able to leverage government on all levels, for one, to get the money to do economic development. We did that in building hospitals, in building schools. But along with that, you have to have a trained workforce. It's important for us to have programs so folks can get training and know how to understand certain skills. The major opportunities in workforce today is transportation, hospitality, manufacturing, the medical field. Those are the major forces today for people to have opportunity. We have to create a trained workforce for that. And I understand that. I currently work for the Saver Foundation where for the last two years, we created 4,000 job cards for people. And all those folks had criminal backgrounds. So, certainly, if they had criminal background, and we can find 4,000 opportunities for them, we can certainly find them for everyone else. I think we need to do something very special for Maywood as well. We should have a resource center out here. We should pass an ordinance that says that anybody building out here are required to have a certain number of local hires. That's what you have to do. We have to make folk hire from the community because they won't do it if you don't. You will see every license plate in the world out here, but you won't see your own. That's exactly what will happen. We have to pass an ordinance to acquire local hires from the community. And I think that this is a good place to start, right here in Maywood.
Are you for, the question is way back to county as a whole, are you for raising revenue to balance the budget, raising property sales taxes? Can you currently identify any areas in the county budget that can possibly be cut to save money, to balance the budget, to avoid raising taxes? How about ladies first?
I wouldn't raise property taxes. I think we are at the point that we should be with property taxes. But I would support.
Could you move it like just a little further? Yeah, that's good.
I would support the increase of gun sale tax, gas tax, visitor's tax. And that would, raising the gun tax, that would deter people from purchasing guns. And that would curb crime in the street. So, that's what I would propose.
At the county level, I don't think we should raise any taxes. We all know the President Pragwinkle just worked hard to roll back the Stroder sales tax. One thing that I do think we need to focus on, and again, this is not at the county level, but I'll advocate for as a Commissioner, is a progressive income tax at the state level. You all know how taxes work in Illinois, right? Right now, everybody pays the same tax percentage. At the federal level, though, if you make more, you pay more. I believe we need a progressive income tax here in Illinois, one that targets high-income earners. If you earn more than $250,000, $300,000, $350,000, whatever it is, I believe that you should pay more. I think it's inherently unfair that somebody who makes $500,000 a year pays the same income tax percentage as my mom, a CTU clerk, who makes $40,000 a year. If we do that, we can get the revenue to commit to things that we care about, like helping people who are mentally ill, education, redeveloping our communities, handling the pension crisis here at the county. So, again, no increase in county taxes, not for us, not for hard-working people in the middle class, but yes, for high-income earners. Yes, also, we need to target people who are part of corporations. Corporations that we know don't even disclose what they pay. It makes no sense to me how multimillionaire corporations pay nothing in state income taxes, in state taxes. If you and I pay, they should pay as well.
First thing that we should do is, first off, we shouldn't raise taxes, but we should create more taxpayers. That's what we need to do. See, that's how we're gonna get more money, by creating more opportunity for people to work. If we create more taxpayers, then you're gonna get more taxes. If we put people to work, then you don't worry about raising taxes. But understand one thing. No politician wants to tell you, "We need to raise taxes," until they get in office. They don't want to tell you now. But let's be real about it. There may be necessary to find revenue from somewhere. This is the government. This is not enterprise. This is not a business where they're selling something and making money. So, but if we do need to find additional income, let's look at things that people don't necessarily have to have, like gambling. That's a choice. Gambling is a choice. Maybe we can, can we tax bullets? I mean, I got to tell you. Do you know, do you know what the gun sales has been? Ever since they passed the law, now everybody can carry a gun? They threw the roof. Let's tax something like that. But the number-one thing, and I stand on this, is to create more taxpayers. And if we do that, we will all achieve more revenue.
Man, I don't favor any new taxes. I think the people are already taxed enough. And I'm proud to have the support of labor. So, I'm the labor guy. Chicago Federation of Labor endorsed our campaign. The Teamsters endorsed our campaign. AFSME endorsed our campaign. And so, I'm standing up for working-class men and women. I think we're working way too hard and paying too much in taxes. Now, the thing that I will say I'm for is an increase in the minimum wage. I think we got to get that minimum wage up so that people can have more resources, so that they don't have to be on public assistance. I know what it's like to be on public assistance. My family, growing up, we were on public assistance for a short period of time. So, I understand that. I understand those challenges. Where will we get savings in the budget? Look, it's a $3 billion-plus budget. We have to look at every line. We have to look to squeeze every efficiency out of government. We have to look how we work with the city of Chicago and others in cooperation and collaboration. And maybe there's duplication of services, right, that we don't need. I mean, I hate calling down to Cook County, and I can't get a real person on the phone. I mean, you get the computerized service that says, "Push a button." But we need to get a real person because we want to get our issues taken care of. Another area where I think we can get savings, talk with Sheriff Tom Dart about it, is video arraignment. They're doing it in Iowa. They're doing it all over the country. We ought to have a pilot program on video arraignment. In other words, he moves, you know, thousands of people each day in and out of jails to courts. And that transportation cost. I mean, if you can do it inside the prison where the prisoner's rights are protected, the state's rights are protected, let's get it done that way.
Like Richard said, and I am definitely for an increase in the minimum wage. But in order for that to work, if we went with the graduated tax, those individuals' taxes now will be higher than they really can afford. So, you're not really helping them out because at the end of the day, when your salary goes up, so does your income tax. It's not one of those things, my income tax stays the same. In order for that to be successful, we need a higher-earned income tax credit. And we need that at the state level as well as the federal level. Now, in regards to fiscal matters, we have a structural deficit, folks. We never raise enough revenue to pay our bills. We raise enough revenue just to get our bills paid fairly. The reality is that 77% of the county budget is salary. So, if you got a cut, you got to start looking at that. Number-one revenue source in the county is fees, not property taxes, licenses, filing court papers, filing real estate documents and things like that. That's where our number-one revenue source is coming from. Now, the reality is, is that the President of the Board has reduced the budget to $152 million. One of the things that helped that was the Obamacare. Because of that, the county pays only 50% on a dollar to provide health care for the injured. But we have to deal with the big problem and the elephant in the room that nobody's talking about that's really what we have to worry about. Our jail is under court order. The hospital at the jail is under court order. Our detention center is under court order. While they are under court order, we don't have a choice but to spend what the federal government is telling us to spend. The bottom line is, we have to get our house in order so we can be in control of those facilities that we're running. Because if not, somebody else is gonna tell us when, where, and how. My biggest fear is that the federal court says, "Since you can't deal with your jail population, build another prison."
And thank the express, all those involved, for inviting me to this forum. Certainly, this is gonna be one of the hottest races on March 18. There's no question about it. This is a race that's down ballot, meaning it's not at the top of the ticket. It's down ballot. But there are a lot of races that are down ballot. The judges are all down ballot. Our race is in them, right above them, but it's still down ballot. Make no mistake about it. This is a hot race because all of a sudden, we have a Chicago mayor who has nothing to do with county government, now trying to dictate who's gonna be the county commissioner of the first district. I'm gonna tell you what you should already know. I live in Chicago. I know folk in Chicago right now waiting to get their frozen water services unthawed and they're waiting for seven, eight days. You may have seen it on television. We got potholes that you have to, it's like a gauntlet driving through the streets. But for some reason now, the mayor and the President of County Board are cutting together and say, "Now, he's gonna dictate who's gonna be the Cook County..." Make no mistake about it. That's exactly what it is. Here we are with three weeks to the election, and all of a sudden now, they're on the stage saying who's gonna be the Commissioner. I don't understand what role the mayor plays in terms of Maywood. I think you got a mayor out here. But that's what's happening. And I know that folks don't want to talk about it, but I'm gonna tell you like it is. My campaign is a people's campaign. And I'm taking it straight to the people. And it's an historic campaign. My life has been an open book. There's no question. I've been elected official. So, my life has been an open, where everybody know my story. And everybody want to say, "Oh, we believe in second chance." But not by corruption, we don't. That's what they're gonna tell you. Because they don't want a person to be there who's gonna fight for the people and willing to stand up against the heavyweights in this county. And they know that I will do that. So, it's an all-out effort now to have direction from the mayor and President County Board and usurp the people, who actually will make the decision. I'm just gonna tell you like it is. Why is there no endorsement from them about the other races that are down ballot? I don't see them endorsing all these judges that are down ballot. I don't see them endorsing all these water recommission candidates that's down ballot. But this race, this race, all of a sudden, they decided to get involved in it. So, don't be a little bit sneaky about that.
My name is Blake Cersey. I started by telling you all about me. Now, let me tell you all about our campaign. My favorite thing about our campaign is the way that it started. It was August. It was 95 degrees. I was standing outside of train stops handing out pieces of literature to anybody who was willing to listen. willing to listen. And let me tell you, that wasn't very many people. We worked hard. It was me, my friends, my family, people who believed. We continued to work hard. I raised as much money as I could, calling anybody who went to law school with me, high school, whatever, wherever I knew them, telling them about this dream that I had. A kid from Austin who grew up in a single-parent household, a kid who had this dream of criminal justice reform and making that real in Cook County. As we began to talk about our message, we began to get more and more attention. The Cook County Board President, Chicago Mayor Rahm Emanuel, several aldermen and committeemen in the city, the village president of Oak Park, all these people, labor, labor unions, the firefighters union, the operating engineers, the electric works, everybody started to look at our race and to be encouraged by what we were saying. I want to build big tents, tents that include everybody, everybody in and nobody out. I'll tell you why the Cook County Board President, the mayor, and all of these people thought that this race was so important, because of us. People who believe in honest, ethical leadership. Those are two people who, let me tell you, they could be, sometimes I look at them and I know that politically they have a lot of similarities, but we know their differences. You see it in the news, they could be primaring each other. But they decided to come together behind our campaign, because we are the real campaign that's here to represent the people. Because you see, it's not about me. I'm that same kid from Austin with this crazy idea that I could bring real change to Cook County, to really move the Cook County forward. And that's why I'm here today. I need your vote on March 18th, because with your support, we can accomplish these crazy dreams.
I'm looking forward to March 18th, to making history about these four gentlemen here. Punch 101. Thank you.
Free Press, let me thank all of you for taking time out of your busy schedules to be here today. Let me thank all of my fellow opponents for being here. Let me say this, you have a clear choice on March 18th. Either you can go with the machine, or you can go with somebody who's the people's candidate. Now, let me tell you what my friend didn't say. See, he didn't say to his endorsements, all of the ones that he got were not a competitive endorsement. In other words, they didn't have a process. All of the endorsements that this campaign has received, the Chicago Federation of Labor, the Independent Voters of Illinois, independent precinct organizations, AFSME, the Teamsters, the Proviso Township Democratic Organization, all of these were competitive endorsements. Everybody had a shot at them. We have, and we're fortunate to have, all of the Proviso mayors endorse this campaign because they know what we've done, they know our body of work, 21 years, 13 in Washington, working on behalf of the people, seven and a half as a partner at Barnes &amp; Thornburg Law Firm. They know that we understand how to get things done, and we have gotten big things done. I want to continue to fight for you. I want to fight for the poor. I want to fight for the 250,000 individuals who don't have health care. I want to get them signed up for county care. I want to fight to make sure that we have safe streets and so that we can have communities that we're proud of, that we're proud to raise our family and that we're proud to retire in. I want to fight to bring jobs back to this community. This community especially, because the unemployment rate is so high. In fact, African-American teens have the highest unemployment rate in the country. And so we need experience. We need ethical leadership experience and somebody who's unafraid and somebody who can't be bought by the machine and somebody who can't be bossed by the machine. I need your support on March 18th. Punch 104, and Richard Boykin will stand up for the poor. Punch 104 for Richard Boykin on March 18th. Thank you, and God bless you.
As interesting as it may be, I was the only people candidate. Now, we got three people that are the people candidate. That's pretty good. Ron just shifted everybody. Okay. Look, let's keep it real. And I'm going to keep it real, because that's just who I am. I'm not going to tell you a whole bunch of stuff that's not true and try to can a speech because it sounds good. The reality is this, I've always been a people's candidate, from the first time I ran to this time. I've never taken political money, I've never been endorsed by political operatives, and I'm thankful that I am a free-spirit, independent-thinking person who can actually stand up to those individuals and tell them, "This ain't happening on my block. I work for you, I represent you, you are the reason that I run. I run because I believe in you, and I believe on November, on March 18th, that you're going to do the right thing, and you're going to put the right person in office." You know, we talk about endorsements. President Obama endorsed a mayor of Chicago by the name of Rahm Emanuel. Ask the people in Chicago, was that a bad endorsement? They'll tell you yes. It's the deal. If you work for someone and you've been loyal to that someone, and they decide to come and support you for the candidacy, be honest, say, "Look, I've worked for the individual." It sounds like a quick pro quo. I don't know if it is or isn't. But if someone was going to give me, you know what, I'd rather have 100,000 votes than $100,000. Because at the end of the day, I'll sleep good at night, because I know at the end, I'm representing you in your interest. I don't have nothing against the mayor, but I do know one thing, as Ike has said, this election should be decided by you, not by outsiders, because the mayor doesn't have a vote over here, Tony doesn't have a vote over here, Tom Dart doesn't have a vote over here. The only people that have a vote over here are you. Don't be fooled by endorsements, that's just what they are, endorsements. What you want is to make the decision on your behalf. I'm the clear choice. I really am the people's candidate. I've been the people's candidate from day one, I'm going to continue to be the people's candidate, and I appreciate the other two candidates wanting to be the people candidate too. So let's make this an interesting election by letting us make the decision what's best for us at the end of the day.